... the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor Bro.
Here.
District one, Morset.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Radamacher.
Here.
District four, Wyland is excused. Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Cook.
Here.
This point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there are anybody that would like to address the council on any subject not on the agenda. Anyone? Oh, Denny. Rich, you're on the agenda.
Mayor, I have the plan commission. We had the issue of downtown guidelines on the agenda for discussion. The guidelines aren't quite ready and so we've taken that particular item off the agenda. There may be people here tonight or maybe people in the listening audience may be interested in coming and please, those people, please note they can stay home. They're only interested in that particular issue, the downtown guidelines and standards discussions. Hopefully, depending on the availability of plan commission members next Thursday, a week after tomorrow, we may have a plan commission discuss only that item. And also, we hope to get the guidelines out to the planning commission members Friday or Monday of this week. So, just want to let people know that if they had planned on attending the meeting tomorrow night, they can reschedule their evening.
Thank you for that announcement, Denny. Anyone else? Before we go to the consent agenda, let's go to the back page. Richard Connor is going to talk to us about a request for room tax funding for the 2009 International Youth Hockey Tournament. So, I thought rather than you sit through the whole meeting, unless you want to, Rich, we'd get you on first.
I can watch it on TV, can't I?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and council members. As the mayor had said, I'm here to respectfully request some financial support in trying to secure the Pee-wee international friendship tournament for Hudson in the year 2009. This tournament is a relatively, well, it's been around for, I guess, about 16 years, something like that, more than that, 18 years. And we are sending a team right now to New Zealand, the Hudson Hockey Association, and they're going to be participating in this tournament over there. And while there, I hope to secure this tournament for Hudson. We believe that the minimal impact on this, and I think this is a conservative number, is economic impact is about $800,000 to this community. We would hope to have 20 to 24 teams here, and those teams would be at about the strength of 20 per team. And so, we're figuring a minimum 400 players here, and they are also accompanied by parents, chaperones, coaches, support staff, interpreters. And so, we're figuring another 400 adults minimum that would be here. For this, we already have the support of the, a number of the, well, actually, Dennis Lavold had talked to all of the hotels and motels in the area, and they have guaranteed us 50 percent of the rooms for this tournament for 2009 at this point. And he said, of course, as we get closer to the tournament, they'd probably be able to release more rooms to us. We have support of the Chamber of Commerce, certainly we have support of the Hudson Hockey Association and the Arena Management Board. We'd be using the two rinks that we have, be able to highlight the fact that we have a second rink here in town. We've been guaranteed exclusive access to the two rinks for the duration of the tournament, which would be seven to 10 days. We would have teams coming here from Japan, Korea, South Korea, Australia, New Zealand, Russia, Canada. We would be inviting also Germany, Sweden, Norway, and a variety of European teams, probably France, Italy, Switzerland. And so, I don't know if people remember, we had the ability to host this, co-host this with St. Paul Johnson a few years back, and Hudson actually had, in town, about 50 kids, none of which could speak English. And there were people around here that kind of raised a few eyebrows. But anyway, this is a tremendous cultural exchange, and what would happen is that these kids actually are homesteaded in the homes of people here in Hudson. So, the whole point of this tournament is a cultural exchange. It's a tremendous opportunity, and I certainly hope that I could get your support. I think this would be a great benefit to the city.
Any questions? Actually, I think this is a good investment, and I think it'll give us quite a return on our investment. As you know, room tax is generated by the hotels and motels in the area, and we do have some monies available because we had predicted that we'd take in about $125,000. We came in at about $135,000. So, we do have some excess monies available. I had to give 40 percent of that to tourism group, but even after that, we have enough money to certainly accommodate what I think is a great, going to be a great advantage for Hudson and Hudson's youth. And I appreciate Rich going after this particular approach for Hudson. I think it'll do a lot for the city and a lot for children and our kids. So, I guess what I need, looking for is a motion to appropriate $3,000 for, I think you mentioned what was needed for, the photography, presentation booklets, warm-up jackets, promotional pins, sponsored event, and he's going to do the PowerPoint presentation.
I'll move that we take $3,000, other room tax.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I agree with the impetus here. I do, and for fear of sounding like the Grinch, which I don't want to do, I do have a bit of a qualm with the warm-up jackets, which represent a little over $800 of the expenditure, almost a third of the expenditures, only because that's an item of personal apparel, which will far outlast the presentation that they make. And I would not want at any time anybody to think that the city of Hudson has been buying, you know, somebody's jacket for them.
But the hotels and motels are really buying it. Well, isn't this like the Olympics where people come in in their uniforms and present themselves to the audience?
Yes. In fact, the warm-up jackets that we're talking about here are the exact warm-up jackets that our team is going to be wearing. And we have a full suit of warm-ups, tops, bottoms. All we're looking for is money for the jackets right now. I think it's, compared to what we might be up against, I think it's relatively modest. I've seen the Koreans come in with fur-lined, full parkas.
Well, you know, that's a good point.
Well, it's just that the jackets are going to far outlast the presentation. And we wind up then buy, we're in the position of buying somebody's apparel. I understand the reason for the warm-up jackets in this presentation. I mean, I certainly know how to put on a presentation, and this would be a welcome part of it. I just am voicing the fact that I do have a qualm about that one portion.
Great. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, counsel.
Thank you for a nice presentation. Good luck, and keep us informed, and put Hudson on the map.
It's my understanding our only competition right now is South Korea, and I don't think we want to be sending our kids to Korea anytime soon. So, I hope to come back and report to you that we have secured this.
You probably need more than three grand, right?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's go to consent agenda, and the Adam Clerk will vocalize those subjects for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of February 5th, 2007. To approve the certified survey map for a 2.81 acre lot as proposed by Banterra LLC. To be amended to include an additional 10-foot utility easement along the east lot line for a distance of 80 feet south of the right-of-way of Stage Line Road. To approve the certified survey map as proposed by Richard and Kathy Haydish to create two zero-lot-line lots for 2229 through 2231 Namak Hagen Street, with the condition that the Haydishes provide a copy of the draft party wall agreement for review by the city attorney, and that the agreement be recorded with the St. Croix County Register of Deeds Office. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $9,55,017.13, a detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a temporary operator's license to be used April 26 through April 29, 2007, at the Hudson Hockey Association event. And to approve regular operators licenses for the period February 22, 2007, through June 30, 2008, a detailed list is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve increasing the municipal court cost from $23 to $28 on municipal citations. To place on file the quarterly reports of the water utility director, the building inspector, and the public utility commission minutes of January 13, 2007, and the fire department annual report for 2006. That is all.
Move for approval?
Second.
Did you happen to see the report from the fire department, everything in color showing exactly the number of calls they had and the evolvements they had? Really a nice job by Miranda, and I want to compliment her publicly. We need a roll call vote.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Let's go down to Finance Committee, Claim for Illegal Tax, Habit for Humanity, recommendation is to, what was that recommendation? Kevin?
For the Habitat?
Thousand something.
Move to approve the reimbursement of $1,007.65 to Habitat for Humanity for Illegal Tax.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Disallowance of Claim of Wisconsin Tax Solutions, Resolution Number 4-07. We have to suspend the rule?
Yeah, you need to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules.
For a second.
Motion.
Move to approve Resolution. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Move to approve Resolution Number 407, Disallowance of Claim of Wisconsin Tax. 407, right?
Second.
Any comments or suggestions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go to seven, Consider Request to Expand the Current Number of Liquor License Available in the City. We do have a request in. I had discussion with council, and Catherine, I have asked her to kind of devise a path of approach if we so wanted to do that. Are there some options of not necessarily okay in the original available seven, or can we do it in portions? Or, I guess I'm asking her for the art of the possible.
Well, currently, the city has a quota ordinance that's less than the state maximum. The state sets, by statute, sets a maximum for Class B intoxication of liquor, and the city's is less. If the council decides that, and basically, we're at, the city is at its quota right now. If we were under the state quota, we'd have, and I misspoke before, we'd have four additional licenses that could be issued. Council really needs to decide, you know, it's a policy issue, what number of licenses it thinks the city can handle in terms of law enforcement and whatever parking, whatever other issues you think might be related to liquor licenses. If you decide you want to increase the quota, then it's a matter of amending the ordinance, and you can't go more than the state maximum. You can go less, and you've got four, basically, to, four available under the state license. You could do less, you could do two, you could do whatever you feel is appropriate for the city.
If we released one at a time, would we have to change that ordinance each time we wanted to do it? Or is there some way of saying, upon the opportunity, you can't do it?
No. I think, plus, I think you just get into a situation where you're kind of setting a precedent of increasing it whenever a new license comes in. I think you should kind of separate the policy issues, determine the quota based on what you think the city, in terms of liquor license businesses, on-sale liquor license businesses can handle, and recognizing that even if you increase the quota, you don't have to grant any specific license. You need to have reasons for not granting that, but neighborhood, law enforcement, you know, public health, safety, welfare-type reasons are sufficient for not granting it. But I think you should separate the quota issue from specific license applications.
For the record, Catherine, are we strictly talking about Class B license?
That's all that Mr. Lundin has requested on behalf of his client. That's what they are looking for, and so, that's all they are concerned about.
I was concerned initially when that request came, primarily not to just open it up to four, because everybody would be in here asking for liquor licenses, maybe without even knowing what the business is. So, I did discuss this with Catherine and said, well, maybe we should take a look at an ordinance that releases two of the four initially, or if you want, all four. But I was a little concerned about opening it up. How would you write that, too? I'm asking her to do that.
Well, you'd figure out what you, you know, how many, well, it's based on population right now. So, I don't know exactly, it increases with the population, so we'd have to figure out how that would work. I'm sure it's doable, but I can't think off the top of my head how it would.
Could I sidetrack you with another question?
Sure.
And I'd like to give two seconds' worth of history on this, because years ago, the city deliberately put its quota different from the state's in order to protect our downtown area, which has got, within three blocks, 14 places where you can get a drink. Is it possible for us to consider a quota for the city but not to include the class, the B3 business district? In other words, can we zone this?
That's a, that's an interesting question. When we looked at it, remember, in connection with another issue, liquor license issue, I looked at other cities, and I think the city of Green Bay has different quotas. I think they do something similar to that.
Well, the reason I bring it up.
I think it's possible. I can't tell you for certain, but I think you could say, we have enough in this area, and, or you could do it another way, these are available, but you could make a policy decision based, you know, when an applicant, we don't want anymore in our downtown area. But if you did it by ordinance, you'd have said it in advance, and you'd just be able to say, no, we're not issuing anymore. So, it's a possibility.
Well, Catherine, my small research indicates to me that this is possible, that as long as we stay below, within the state's limitations, that we can say that within this district, the B3 business district, the quota is based on this population, and for the rest of the city, it's, yeah, it's whatever new population figure we come up with, so that we would not be increasing liquor licenses tonight or at any time in the very near future downtown, but in other areas of the city that's on board.
I think you just put some language that the number, you know, freezing the number, no licenses are available in the additional licenses.
Well, maybe we should take some time to research this. I don't think that we even have to vote on it this evening, but we could have Catherine research this a little bit on a couple or two, three approaches, one being the one you suggested, and a couple on releasing two of the four or all the four, so that we can basically make a decision on some facts. If you feel that's the right approach, I think that's certainly one that we should consider before we just open it up to four and.
Yeah, you can't vote on it tonight because it requires an ordinance amendment anyway. So, it makes sense to see what options are available.
I move that we authorize Catherine to burn up some billable hours on researching this and coming back to us with some viable alternatives.
Yeah. I'll second that. I think that's an excellent idea.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on other aspects you want to look at?
No, I concur with Scott. I think it's a good idea to set some districts. That's a good idea. Although, I mean, as you know, the development down here, there may be a request for, there's a restaurant patrol proposal to have, so we may want to leave it open for maybe one more down there. But I think we should look at creating some districts if we can. And we did talk as a council previously that we would look at these on a case-by-case basis as much as possibly possible.
Well, even after they become available, then we have to go through the process that the council had put forth regarding the number of employees, the.
Parking.
Parking, all kinds of different requirements.
Yeah, and if you do increase the quota and such that additional licenses are available, there is that advertising process and waiting period, and so, you could have several applicants for whatever's available.
Fine. I think we should do that.
I understand what you're saying about the zoning. I mean, I see the positive points about that. I have some concerns about it, though, because I think we're putting ourselves in a corner where we might prohibit a possibly good business to go into an area that might be an asset to that area, whether it be the downtown or somewhere else. I mean, we have the power to make the decision on, when the applicant comes forward, to decide, well, it just won't fit into this area because there's, you know, other issues that may prohibit.
But as Paul suggests, that maybe we reserve one for that downtown district and do the others in the other, in the other district.
Maybe. I would like to see Catherine look at other, you know, obviously, more than one option besides just those.
I mean, at any time, you could say, no, we, based on any application, we feel at this point, we have enough in that area. I mean, and that another one would not be good for that neighborhood and so forth.
But Catherine, from the last time, if they meet those five requirements, we have to give it to them, correct?
There's quite a bit of discretion, and you would have to, I mean, you'd have to be able to articulate, and the reason would be that area is saturated, if you felt this way, with liquor license businesses, and we don't want to see anymore in that area.
Because I thought that was the reason we kept this ordinance as it is, so that we could look at them individually, because if they meet those five state guidelines, we were pretty much, had to give it to them. Because you had listed five things that the state, you know, parking.
That's in the city's ordinance.
Oh, okay. But if they meet all five of those, I thought we were obligated to.
We've got language in there that says, if there's some other reason that you haven't, you know, that applies in this particular context, there is, the city, the council has discretion. You have to be able to articulate a reason. You can't just say, no. But I think it would be a valid reason that you don't want anymore in that area, and there's enough in that area.
Well, I think Dennis, excuse me, Paul, go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
Well, I just want to piggyback on top of what Dennis said. I think what he's getting at is an important point, because our experience has shown us here in Hudson that the state of Wisconsin's statutes very much favor the liquor industry, and that if you are alive and breathing, you can pretty much get a liquor license. And that is not the criteria that fits for Hudson. We want something better than that. This is the time for us to show that kind of constraint before those licenses become available. It's been my experience with this council for the past seven years, that the time to be careful about issuing liquor licenses is now, not after they're already available.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Well, and I think it's important to look at what's happened since, for instance, 10 years ago, when we were 5,000 people. Now, we're 11,700 almost. We've got 45,000 people in the area. Development out of the downtown area has certainly grown, with really no liquor licenses advanced to that particular area. And it's something that I think we should give a consideration to.
Well, that was my point exactly, Mr. Mayor, because our reduced number of licenses lower than the state was to protect downtown. That was put into effect before the hill was developed and all the businesses.
Well, and the total liquor business in Hudson has been transformed from years ago when you just had a bar. Today, it's a bar and a restaurant, and it's totally changed from the old days of 20 years ago, when it was just a drinking establishment.
Devin, if I may ask, Devin, when does the population figures release?
They become official in October. We get an estimate in August, and then I believe it's October 15th or 13th or something like that. So, we would know in August, and then, but it isn't official until October. I think it's October 15th.
I think we had a good discussion. I think you understand what we need, and if you have any further questions of anybody or have any suggestions of the council people, please get to Catherine. I'm not clear, did we vote on my motion?
No.
Don't think so.
We're about to. Okay.
I just want to say, it's one thing that it's great to see that this is an opportunity for some respectable businesses to come back and take a look at what's available in Hudson up on the hill.
It's growing like crazy, and we have to go along with the times.
Give us a choice, keep some money in Hudson.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Denny. Let's go to Public Safety Committee, number three, or number one, excuse me. Consider purchase and use of crossing flags at some intersections. Paul's going to show us one of these flags, and I think he's going to be out there quite frequently.
Yeah, basically, here we go. This is the potential prototype. It's an 18-inch by 18-inch flag with mesh design. It's the same size as the ones that they use in Bayport. The only difference is, is that the one in Bayport has, it's a vinyl sign with a decal on each side that says stop. Do you want to see that? There you go. The question is, these flags here are the types of flags that we use on top of stop signs. Would we put a new stop sign in or want to, you know, bring attention to this traffic control sign? I think these cost about five bucks. The ones they use in Bayport, they're a little bit longer, they have a longer handle. Again, they have the decals on them, they're about $40 apiece, $39.95.
I like this one.
Yeah, I do, too. I think it's a little small. I think it should be a little bit bigger, though, is my, that was kind of consensus of the Public Safety Committee, Randy, if I remember right, was that this is nice, but maybe it should be a little bit bigger when you walk across the street or if you want to hold it.
I think, wait, that wasn't serving the purpose that we were ultimately looking for, with no symbol, no nothing, and obviously, we took into consideration the cost, but this is not what I, my expectation was.
What was yours?
The exact type that.
That they have in Bayport?
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul, this is a $30 one?
No, this is like a $5.
$5 one?
Oh, excuse me, okay. Because the $30 one is what the committee is recommending.
Paul? Right. It was what we're recommending. And the reason for that is a couple, twofold. One is that Bayport does spend about $5,000 a year on replacing flags, so I wanted to point that out.
They do grow legs.
They do grow legs.
Every college room is going to have one of these.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I do. So, this type of flag, I think, will work if it's, even if it's a little bigger, I don't think it'll be, I'm sure we can get some of this for less than $40.
What would happen, I know the recommendations for the other one. So, what's the purpose of showing this one?
The purpose of showing that one is to show the size of it, so everybody could see, see, you know, get an actual, physical look at what the type of flag it is, and also to show this as an alternative or a potential alternative.
Suppose you could stencil stop on there and put a longer handle on it.
Or throw a.
We're up to seven and a half.
Throw a decal on it, right.
But you said that's the same size as Bayport's.
This is the same.
Except theirs is solid.
Right, exactly, with decals.
Well, I think the longer handle's important, and I think having stop on it is important, too.
The flag is bigger over there. Well, we must have, Jim, do we have a stencil of the shot?
It's the same size.
This actual flag.
With a stop on it?
Neither's going to be, not from the rear of the reader. You're going to need something reflective in order to really have it, you know, be valid. Because I think probably the best thing to do would be maybe take a look at any 18-inch piece of reflective material, stick it on the outside edge, that should help hold the flag down, and that type will make the signature more visible. I think the, whether you need stop on it, we can stencil stop on it, that isn't a big deal. Issue gets to be, you're only reader from one side, because obviously, backwards you have.
Can we spend $5,000 a year on something that could be a different approach there?
Sure, whatever you want to do.
This seems too much for what we're trying to accomplish up there.
Well, it's a safety issue, and we're trying to save lives, and we want people to become conspicuous.
But is this the Band-Aid approach, or is this, are we just spending five grand a year on flags? We could have put that money towards a more permanent solution.
Yeah, which cost was about 50 grand.
I'm not saying that, but.
Well, I would like to remind the council that I did speak with the captain in Bayport, who really could not say enough good things about the flag situation there. Yes, some of them do run away. They are, they become souvenirs. He said, you've just got to understand that. Is it going to be? Is it going to be your total supply for the year? No, nowhere near that, but some of them are going to leave you. It's still a very low-cost solution to this problem and it's effective. That's the thing. That's what he's so happy about. They have not had one problem since they started this.
And there's a lot of traffic going through Bayport.
Well, many more times than we have on buying.
They have four intersections that have flags. We're only going to have one, so we're not going to have the volume of flags. We might only have $1,000.
Well, somebody make a motion.
I think that what we're looking for is to set a budget and to come back with maybe a different prototype than this that everybody would be comfortable with.
Do you have a, we did not get in our packets a picture of the $30 flag.
Um, well, yeah, it's the same, well, it'd be the same as this, the picture, you've seen the picture before.
This is the mesh, it's mesh again like this or it's solid?
Solid, solid.
So when you put stop on it, it reads right from both sides?
This is the only one that we had around to show, so.
Well, I will move that we approve the purchase of 130-dollar flags to start off the campaign.
I'll second that.
Discussion, Jim?
I would like to suggest that before we spend anything, let's give a prototype and have a look at it so that everybody is perfectly clear because I would be a little concerned that potentially we order them and wait a minute, it really isn't quite what I envisioned. And I think everybody might be happier if we just dropped that, took a second, ordered one and made sure that that's the fact that everybody has in mind.
Is this the same flag that they're going to have in Bayport, the one we're ordering? Which we've all seen?
Yes.
Is it? I don't know.
Yeah.
No.
As a matter of fact, we got the information from Bayport and we're to order them, right?
Right.
Maybe we're for $40.
I mean, Jim's approach seems to make sense to me. We can see it, I mean, because like we discussed it, well, we didn't discuss at Public Works, but we, I talked to him about the stop signs aren't coming out right away anyway. They can't until the ground thaws. So it seems like we have time to see one.
Want to amend your motion?
I'll so amend the motion. Do we need, can we get a sample without buying it or do we need to buy one of these?
Why don't we just get one from Bayport?
Just go buy one.
And lend lease.
If you'll advance me the money for the gas, I'll go across and.
I'd pick one up tomorrow.
Well, why don't I just.
They could add to their depletion.
Why don't I just repeal my motion and we'll proceed along those lines?
Is it okay with the seconder?
Yes, that's fine.
Motion repealed and Jim, get a hold of one.
I'll give you Captain John's number.
Within legal limits, okay? Uh, let's go to, I'm sorry, did you guys?
No.
Number three, consider rescinding the odd-even parking ordinances and change it to 24-hour parking regulation. Is the acting chief going to talk about that or what? I know we got a recommendation from Sergeant Marty, but could you give us an executive summary and highlights of why we should do away with the old and come up with the new? I get more complaints about this thing than almost any other complaint that we have here.
Sergeant Jensen has put a lot of time being the only patrol sergeant and he had the officers start immediately February 1st to do courtesy tickets for about two weeks and then he had the officers start sighting and he's kind of monitored the situation throughout the entire winter here, which is, and the ordinance is only good for four and a half months. November, December, January, February and ends the middle of March. The amount of complaints in regards from the citizens on ticketing and the educational factor was tremendous. The ordinance was, one of the reasons the ordinance was originally created was to hopefully facilitate a little bit more better snow removal and Sergeant Jensen took a lot of time thinking about this as to what might be a better way of not only continuing with the snow removal but also being more friendly to the citizens because a lot of tickets were issued for odd-even parking. I don't know what the number was, but Marty handled just about 100% of the complaints. And his idea was basically going, reverting back to what we've done in the past here in Hudson for years. And that is ticketing cars and getting them towed off the street within 24 hours after the snow ends. And the last little snow that we had, the last couple of inch snow, we basically used that system and I believe we wound up towing about five or six cars eventually off the street. But in regards to tickets that were issued, there was only about a dozen tickets that were issued because the officers checked the entire thing and the system seemed to work. One of the things that we did do was that the cars that were towed, were towed during the daytime after they had been issued a ticket, very visible on the cars. And it was a coordinated effort with the city crew because the snow plow, as soon as the cars were removed from the street, the snow plow plowed the street immediately. The system seemed to work. The complaints that we had were very minimal and if they were, once it was explained to the people, they had no problems accepting the ticket and actually the toll.
I think it's a good idea. I get a lot of complaints, guys work at Anderson's, they come home 11 o'clock. They really say, no, what day is this and should I park on the other side or should I stay on this side? Because the day changes at 12 o'clock midnight, now the next day. So it's sometimes confusing to a lot of people and they just put up their arms and say, huh, give it a chance and see what happens.
So just to be clear, the new system is that they've got an orange placard or postcard essentially placed on the windshield that says you have 24 hours to remove your vehicle or we're going to tow it. And so it's very clear, very concise. People will know exactly what it is that they have to do.
Is the ticket not issued until they tow? So you give them a little warning card to move their car.
The officers go around.
It's not a ticket until they tow it, correct?
Once, right, that's correct. That's correct. They, the officers go around and identify all the cars that are basically snowbirds, very easily to see. They haven't been moved. They get the orange placard. The officers follow up the next day. If they're still there, they issue the ticket. The tow company is right there. They pull the car and the city follows up with the plow and plows the streets.
Could I ask that we get Chief Jim Fry in on this conversation for just a second? I do have a question regarding change in this. When the council enacted this several years ago, there was a concern at the time that in the wintertime, cars not parking quite as close to the curb as they will in the summertime. If there are cars on both sides of the street, it can impede emergency vehicles from reaching their destination and that's why we wanted them all on one side of the street. Now, if we don't, if that's no longer a concern, I just want to check with Chief Fry. Jim, do you have any thoughts on that?
As long as the streets are of a width, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
It does get a little narrow, but drive a little slower.
So you don't think there's going to be a problem getting emergency vehicles through?
Well, it's about years it might be, but in general, probably not.
Okay.
Not with global warming the way it's been.
You know, some years where we get, hoping it's the months of snow and, you know, eventually it starts creeping in.
Well, that was the reason for having all the cars on one side of the street.
One of the things you have to realize is that that ordinance is only good for four hours. So the other 20 hours, cars can park actually side, actually right across from each other. The ordinance is only good for, from 2:00 AM to 4:00 AM. So the other 20 hours of the day, they could actually.
Another thing that the citizens didn't understand, right?
That always was confusing.
Madam Counselor, do we have to change our existing ordinance?
Yep.
So that if you were to accept this new approach, we'd have to have Catherine put up a new ordinance?
I think all we have to do is rescind the odd-even ordinance, just divorce the 24-hour parking ordinance.
But you got to do that by ordinance, repealing the existing, yep.
Would this count as first reading tonight?
No, it's got to be in writing.
If we don't have the wording in front of us.
So we wait till we get the new one?
Yep.
We don't even have to make a motion.
Information only?
If you want to make a motion directing me to do this.
We move that Catherine, please.
Spend more money.
Spend more money, doing what you do so well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does that include the compliment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Consider compliance officer assistance with sign ordinance enforcement.
Yes, there's a discussion at the Public Safety Committee to have Mr. Krupich assist the planning department and overseeing sign ordinances, especially the signs on the sidewalks, et cetera, when he's out and about with his, doing his normal duties. If, in fact, Danny and David in his department, in their department, they need some assistance. They're bogged down at certain times of year and David's out and doing his normal duties that he can look and see if there are any violations of the sign ordinance.
Everything's in order with all Danny's group or what?
Well, I just made a couple of comments. It will require ordinance change. So also, under that provision, really, I'm the only officer, only enforcement officer that's named and we really should clarify the provisions as deputies. We don't have a provision in our ordinance that really specifies David Gray or Assistant Zoning Administrator. So we probably, there's a couple of cleanup items we really need to do with the cold. Couple of things. One is, you know, we really need to get out and we'll probably spend about three full days really trying to get out, get some of these big colored signs down. It's going to take an aggressive effort and time. It's going to take about three days really to get out to the public, get those down. And also, the other issue was the signs downtown, making sure that there's adequate room on the sidewalks for people to traverse the sidewalk areas without being impeded. So that is important. It's a, you know, possible ADA consideration. So David would really be the third line. You know, we're not suggesting he'd be the primary person doing the enforcement. He'd just be one additional person, third in line to possibly do the enforcement. So I'll prepare the ordinance changes, take it to Planning Commission and bring it back to the council.
Could I just?
Did you run it by me also?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Could I just have Chief Fry give us his thoughts on this?
Chief Fry?
I had sent an email to Councilman Marseth in regards to the, Mr. Krupich's or the compliance officer's time. We're adding one more duty to his schedule or to his, one more thing for him to do in the compliance area. And yet we've expanded growth in the commercial districts as far as fire inspections and that goes as well. I'm just curious as to how much more time you're expecting from the compliance officer to deal with these sign issues?
I don't think we can answer that right now, but if he's in third in line, chances are he's not going to be minimal and we can determine at that particular time whether he needs overtime or additional compensation.
Okay. That's my biggest concern is that the fire inspections and public education take priority.
Well, that's, that's absolutely.
Because we are funded by that.
Right, we are getting state dollars for that through 2% dues for him to do those activities.
Taking away any of his time.
I just want to make sure that.
Maybe the whole sign problem will be cleaned up in a month and it won't even be necessary. But when it is necessary, I think we ought to be able to have that advantage to get him involved when necessary. Is that okay?
As long as his fire prevention duties and fire inspection duties.
Hey, that's number one priority.
Okay.
Absolutely. Is that all right? Do we need a motion?
No, it's another one.
Just information.
More informational.
Let's go to Park Board, 2007 concessions agreement with Grandview Park, Community Park. You want to handle that, Paul? Somebody else going to handle it?
Jim, are you going to take the parks agenda here? Do you want me to?
Well, we basically have copies of the agreements and there's really no change that's significant, correct?
Just enforce, a little more enforcement on requiring the association to make sure they get their.
That they report it accordingly?
Exactly.
I think they used to do it once a year or something?
Right, so it's the concessions agreement and I move that we approve it as submitted.
So moved. We got a motion and a second. Any highlights you want to give us?
I think we just.
Other than what Paul said?
What Paul said, we just kind of beefed up the language a little bit, made it a little clearer.
And it's basically saying, give us a quarterly report and the monies. Or monthly and the monies. Okay? Any questions other than that?
Well, did they agree to that? Was there reception? How was?
The indication we have is that's what we've asked for is fine. They've seen it and.
They didn't want to give it up over that.
Thank you. That's all we need.
Do you want to talk about Booster Days?
We'll call a question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. How about the 2007 Booster Days event, Lakefront Park?
Basically, that is, they came and talked to us. It's just the first step in their process for the, whatever it is, large.
Large assembly.
Large assembly.
And they're going to go ahead with that?
They're going to go ahead with that and the thing was, they just wanted to make sure the dates were good. So by and large, at this point, really, this is just informational. Be advised, it's coming.
Okay, and I think in addition to that, we've basically settled on a, we have been paying, is it $8,700 for fireworks? $7,800 for fireworks. We've been getting a lot of complaints basically about the fireworks, that they were somewhat inadequate. I met with the boosters this week and they were asking for $2,000 more. Those initial monies came out of the room tax. I think that if we're getting complaints on our exhibit, we should really authorize another $2,000 for fireworks so that the people that assembled down there at least get a good show. And they made a plea to us. We had been actually putting up all the money for fireworks and to do it right, we need another $2,000. And I thought that I'd ask the council to give me permission to use those dollars from the excess from dollars to add $2,000 to the fireworks display.
Could we get two birds with one stone? Because that's not, there is another complaint having to do with Booster Days from my district and I realize my district, that Booster Days is held in the 5th District and that is a noise problem late in the evening, music way too loud. I get a lot of, my phone's ringing every time, every July. People asking me to please go down there right then and there and stop that band. Obviously, that's not possible, but we do need an understanding with the boosters. Happy to help them with their fireworks. They need to help us with a noise problem.
Well, aren't you guys going to cut that off at what time in the evening? 10?
Booster, right now, the proposal is to.
Not for the fireworks.
Fireworks.
Talking about the music.
The music was, the proposal we have, did we have done our ordinance yet? But it was getting proposed at 11:20 at Sunday.
11:20?
Yes.
But we're working, we'll have to obviously look at that, but we are looking at this in the Public Safety Committee, working with Jeff Johnson. He's going to work with each of these events coming through with their music people to do more short throw systems versus, you know.
Having a standard.
Standard systems, which won't obviously help your district, you know, a lot, but it'll help, you know, as far as the music going up the hills and so forth.
That may, that should come up. That discussion will be had as they go through the large assembly ordinance because that's a concern and it'll, it will go back to parks and public safety.
Okay, we'll take it up then.
Going through that process.
Do you have any calls, at least I don't, when they have a band that's outside some of our establishments downtown?
You're talking about North Hudson. Yes, I, we get a lot of flack on that. You're talking, you're talking about North Hudson? Yes, I, we get a lot of flack on that too.
So they can stay open until what, two playing music and they're...
They were playing one tok over the line at two o'clock in the morning last year and it was...
Well, I got calls because they wanted me to stop it from the Pepper Days in North Hudson.
That's what I'm talking about, is we have no jurisdiction over the Pepper Festival.
But you guys are working on it. Bring back a recommendation that's compatible. Quite frankly, we're going to have to extend that if they do have the fireworks because that will be after, what time is, on the fireworks?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock? Okay. Because there is some sort of noise restriction, but we'll have to include that in our agreement with the large assembly.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's wiggle room, um, yeah.
Okay. Are you asking for the two thousand dollars at this time?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we give them the two thousand dollars and that they listen very carefully to our complaints about noise.
Can we vote on that or is, with it on the agenda?
Well, I think it's related to the Booster Days.
I just want to make sure it's under that picture.
It's an appendage. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Is that all right, Madam Counselor? Requested the Hudson Booster Club to erect the batting cages at Field Five in Grandview Park. Paul or Jim or whom ever?
I think basically it's informational.
Are they paying?
They're paying.
That's very good information.
That's what you needed to know?
Well, it's for the girls softball primarily, isn't that right, Jim? So people know that, that that's...
Well, I move that we give permission to the boosters to erect the batting cage by the fast pitch field, Field Five at Grandview Park this spring.
Third second? Discussion?
I think we should have some insurance, proof of insurance and stuff like that related to that.
All right, I will make sure of that.
Did we vote on that or not? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. St. Croix County Parks Pedestrian Bicycle Trail. Jim?
Uh, well, Don Gilbert volunteered to represent the city as part of that. It's somewhat part of our parks plan as well, so it seemed a logical choice.
Have we appropriated money in our budgets for that?
Well, they're ways out before they're looking at construction on that.
Oh, okay. So we probably have that in...
It's basically his master planning.
Two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Yes.
Move that we approve Don Gilbert as representative for the Park Board for the, for the St. Croix County Pedestrian Bicycle Plan.
Thank you for that. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Hudson High School Baseball Program fundraiser.
Uh, they came before us, wanted to park a trailer up at Grandview for a collection of aluminum cans. Ultimately, the resolution was dress the trailer up a little bit. We would look at it for a ninety-day trial period. And once the ninety days were up, evaluate how things were, you know, was it a good location for them? And was it working for us? Was it, wasn't it nice or it wasn't causing us trash problems, whatever? So that was the recommendation.
Good idea. Is that okay with the Park Board?
Yep.
Good. Do we need a motion?
Move to approve that the baseball program park a trailer for a ninety-day trial period at Grandview Park to collect cans.
Second? You need insurance on that?
That's not tied to the ground in any way. It's their vehicle.
Aluminum cans, we could hit with that.
I worry about people climbing on it and doing that kind of stuff. We probably should have some kind of minimal, since it's a ninety-day trial period, minimal agreement, which, it's a school district, they've got immunity, so just to be named as an additional insured.
Wouldn't that fit on our, our normal insurance umbrella?
Well, it would, but it's when you're taking on additional liability that you otherwise wouldn't. I mean, it would fit under your insurance, but...
Why don't we ask the insurance company if it fits?
I'm, I'm sure it does, but yeah, we can certainly do that.
Well, rather than create some more... Can you do that? Mr. Diver? Okay, need, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Mutual aid agreement with the Prescott Fire Department. Chief Fry?
Excuse me, I was approached by Prescott to do a mutual aid agreement with Prescott, City Prescott. I forwarded them a copy of the agreement that we use for St. Croix County. They accepted it that way. We, I would just need the city's approval to accept.
What's your opinion on that particular need?
It, it'd be like a third tier for us. It wouldn't be, happen very often. I mean, we wouldn't be going there, they wouldn't be going here.
It would be under an extreme condition?
Yeah, it'd be the extreme condition kind of a thing.
And the same in reverse?
Right, exactly. It, it's much like we have some with Lake Elmo and Maplewood. That'd be kind of a third tier type of thing or something catastrophic.
Very good. Any questions, Chief? Jim?
Uh, I got contacted from the Public Works Director of Prescott and they're looking to do something similar with Public Works, you know, potentially water and sewers. So I forwarded some information and just, they're going to take a look at it and if it comes to fruition, we'll come back for it. You got some other, other things to add, just across the board?
Any questions, Jim? I have a question. Where was this fired this afternoon?
Sam Ellers.
North Hudson?
No, out off of Bear Drive.
Oh, okay. I just wondered, I wrote down. I'll move, I'll move to approve mutual aid agreement with the Prescott Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Let's see, we just about handled everything, huh? Communication recommendations of the mayor. I'm sure everybody's reading the paper and getting comments on that little building we're putting out at the end of the dyke. That's all I had to say. Communications items for future agendas without discussion. Any else, person? City Attorney? City Administrator?
Just a comment that the speed sign out on is out erected up on Vine Street coming in. And I go out to school every morning and it is kind of interesting to watch the rearview mirror, how quickly they go from thirty-nine to twenty-four. You know, so it is, it is very effective. You can see the people as soon as that thing starts flashing at them. So I think it will have a positive effect out there.
I think our police department was observing that since it was put up. And by the way, there's a picture of Public Works and our gracious representative from 3M who put that sign up there. And talking to Sergeant Marty, he said they were sitting there watching the screeching of brakes as they noted this particular sign. So it is effective as, as we expected. But I believe the highlight of that particular solar-generated sign is early in the morning and later in the afternoon. And there is a time element on it.
It is, it's a prototype, so therefore it doesn't have the battery, you know, it takes more, obviously the sunnier it is. But, so what they've done is they've made sure it works between a certain time, 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. And then in the evening hours, that it will for sure be on and then as the, the sun...
High-traffic times.
Right. And as the sun allows it to add additional hours, they will do that. But they want to make sure that the high-peak hours were the, that it was working at that time.
And they're suggesting if we have another one, but this is quite effective, that we probably wire that permanently. Is that right, Jim? So, it's very good. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Not going to resign yet.